Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council Meeting to order.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Gallups?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Schoblum?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson.
Yep. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I will second.
A motion by Merle, and second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to public input this evening. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on anything not on the agenda?
My name's Steve Bodett, and I live at 114 Ridge Brook Drive, Cannon Falls. I am on the Board of Directors for Ridge Brook condo Association, and the reason that we're here this evening is we attended Planning Commission meeting last month concerning the proposal of an asphalt preheating facility and a maintenance bay for the Progressive Braille located on the Ray Rapp property. And we've discussed this at length amongst our association, and we're here this evening stating concern about these being so close to residential, that's within a half block of our properties. Concern about the smell, concern about the noise, and just wondering, I know Cannon Falls needs industry, but in these two proposed projects could be very advantageous to Cannon Falls. However, are they even being introduced to the industrial park rather than the residential area? And that's basically that, that's what we are concerned that we want to express this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And nothing's happened with any of that yet. They'll still be going to the Planning Commission September fourteenth before anything happens with any of that. Anybody else wishing to address the council this evening under public input? If not, we'll move on to recognitions, police recognition awards, and I will turn that over to Chief McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council. As you know, we've recognized officers in the past for the things that they do. I'm honored to be here this evening to recognize three of our officers for their actions in July. Not everything that the Police Department does, you know, is noteworthy. We talk about some of the things that are from the beat, you know, just the routine things that we do. The officers do an outstanding job day in and day out. But when they do something that is truly worthy of recognition, everything they do is. But to bring them in and present it in front of the council is something that I think is important, and I'm very privileged to be able to do. This evening, I want to recognize two officers for their actions. If I can have them come forward. Officer Jacob Edwinson and Officer Trevor Sullivan. Let me read a little summary of what happened on July first. On July first, at 7:47 PM, Officer Trevor Sullivan and Officer Jacob Edwinson were dispatched to a juvenile male who stated he was going to jump off a bridge. Officer Sullivan learned from the juvenile's friend, who was with the juvenile male, that they were on the grain bin at Egg Partners. Officer Sullivan advised Officer Edwinson and dispatch of what he learned. When officers arrived, they observed the juvenile male sitting on the outside of the safety rail with his feet hanging over the edge, more than 150 feet, or correction, 125 feet above the ground. Officer Edwinson arrived and attempted to communicate with the juvenile male from the ground while Officer Sullivan looked for a way up the grain bin. Officer Sullivan made it to the roof and saw the juvenile male laying on his back with the juvenile friend holding onto him. Officer Sullivan grabbed the juvenile male's left arm to prevent him from jumping. Officer Sullivan and the juvenile friend were having a hard time restraining the juvenile male, who was trying to get himself free and over the edge. Officer Edwinson saw assistance was needed and ran to assist Officer Sullivan. Officer Edwinson arrived and took over for the juvenile friend. Officer Edwinson was able to handcuff the juvenile male's right arm to a steel safety rail. At this point, the juvenile male threatened both officers, but eventually started to calm down. The juvenile male's guardian arrived at the top of the grain bin, and along with the juvenile friend was able to get the juvenile male calmed down. Officer Sullivan and Edwinson assisted the juvenile male in getting down off the safety rail, or correction, getting him under the safety rail and escorted him down off the roof. Officer Sullivan, Officer Sullivan and Officer Edwinson's quick thinking in response to a suicidal juvenile and the actions of the juvenile's friend prevented the juvenile male from killing himself. It is for these actions that Officer Sullivan and Officer Edwinson are presented on this first day of September 2015 with the Cannon Falls Police Department Life Saving Award. And the juvenile male's name is withheld, is presented with the Citizens Recognition Award. He requested not to come publicly to receive that award, and I'm going to honor that request, and we'll present it to him along with his guardians as well. With that, Officer Sullivan, pleased to present you with the, pleased to present you with the life-saving pin and the certificate.
Thank you.
Officer Edwinson, also pleased to present you with the life-saving pin and the certificate. Next, I'll have Officer Joshua Kovard come forward, please. On July 28th, at 11:59 PM, Officer Josh Kovard was dispatched to a medical of a woman in labor. When Officer Kovard arrived, he ran inside and learned the baby had already been delivered. The baby's grandfather was holding the baby, and it appeared to be in respiratory distress. Officer Kovard suctioned the baby girl's mouth, and she started to cry. Officer Kovard noted that this was music to his ears. Officer Kovard cleaned the baby girl up a little, wrapped her up, and handed her back to the grandfather along with instructions. Officer Kovard then tended to the medical needs of the mother. Officer Kovard then held the baby to monitor its condition until the ambulance arrived and took over care. It was for Officer Kovard's quick thinking and decisive action to provide a medical assistance to ensure the baby was able to breathe, and that both mother and baby were monitored until the ambulance arrived, that Officer Kovard is presented on this first day of September 2015 with the Cannon Falls Police Department Life Saving Award. I'll turn this back over to council for any comments they want to make. Extremely proud of these officers. When you're done, I'm going to step off for a second so I can some photos with them, and then I'll be back in.
I'd like to say, you know, the job that our officers do day in and day out, you put your lives on the line every day. You do things that aren't always the, the regular duties of pulling cars over or anything else. It's the other things that you have to know, that you've learned through all your training, and you never know when you're going to need it. And thank you, and congratulations for a job well done.
Thank you, guys.
I didn't mean to scare everybody off. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. This time, I will read the consent agenda for the folks at home. Item A is adjusting correct claims for accounting period ending August 26, 2015. Item B are the meeting minutes for the August 18, 2015 City Council Meeting. Item C is approved classification and compensation study proposal. Item D, Resolution 2145, ordering a portion, a portion of State Street West to be included in West Side Two Public Improvement Project. Item E is accept resignation of Trevor Sullivan. You all should have had a copy of that by your chairs. Item F, reserve officer additions. Item G, Resolution 2146 in support of application for a temporary classification of body warm camera data. Item H, higher pay access technician. Item I is approve Allison McCusker to practice massage in the city limits. And item J, Resolution 2147 authorizing entering into the Minnesota Government Access Agreement. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
I'd like to bring down C.
Item C, okay. That will become item 8B. Anything else? If not, with the removal of C, Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I will second.
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. This time, we'll move on to council business. Item A is the authorization, to authorize evaluation of submittal of a Transportation Economic Development Program application.
In Ron's absence, I'll give just a little background to the City Council, what the TED application, which is Transportation Economic Development Funding made available through the Minnesota Department of Transportation. This is a funding program that the state developed several years ago, combining the dollars and expertise of the Department of Economic Development and MINDOT to fund transportation projects throughout the state of Minnesota that end up creating jobs, expansion of the tax base, et cetera. On August 17th, Ron and I were at MINDOT offices in District Six in Rochester. We listened to the presentation of the program, the criteria, the requirements for application, and came back to Cannon Falls and had some further discussions with Greg Anderson at SEH about seeking their assistance to put an application of this type together if we're going to pursue this. Also looked at some of the economic development potential in and around the Overpass. The Overpass would be the, the project that if we pursue an application would be the request for, for funding of. But along with that Overpass bridge, we would need to show in an application to be competitive that there actually would be some economic development that would come along with the bridge in the event that it's funded. So, long story short, we brought a recommendation to the council tonight to, at your approval, to authorize us to pursue further the opportunities for economic development around a project like the Overpass. And to the extent that we find that there is some legitimate development that could occur if the bridge were built, pursue then with the assistance of SEH the development of an application that would be submitted by September 25th of, of this year. So, looking for council authorization tonight to, to allow me to go ahead and pursue some of the economic development prospects further, and in the event that we discover that there are some legitimate opportunities to then work with, with Greg and SEH to put together an application that would go in by the end of this month, essentially.
And just to let people know, I was, I received emails on this from MINDOT and from Greg LeXon, the county engineer, you know, for us to look at this, that they thought this might be something that we should do, so, to try to help get the funding to, to finish up that project, so. And I made sure I let Ron and, and everybody know that it's something that we needed to look into, and that's why they went down to the meeting at Rochester to find out more about it.
And then, as I understand it, the plan is for now, if we go forward with this, is you are going to try and find out if there is an economic basis for moving forward with the actual TED program?
Correct. I'm aware of a, a couple proposals on the west side of Highway 52, so I would reach out to at least three individuals, talk to them about their project plans, and see whether or not what they're trying to do could be aided with some potential funding from DED. And if we find that there is a match there, then we would have some reason, reasonable basis to go ahead and make an application and let, and let MINDOT know that in the event that the Overpass is built, that they're, they're anticipating some, some additional economic development as a result.
Anybody else got anything? If not, the Chair will take a motion to authorize the staff to continue to evaluate the feasibility of preparing and submitting a competitive application for TED funding and authorize SEH to assist us in pursuit of their proposal.
I will second.
Have a motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to item 8B, which is the Classification and Compensation Study Proposal.
Yeah, um, you know, after listening to the person that presented that last time in our other meeting, I mean, I didn't know much about what was going on, so I did a little research and everything. And, and like she was saying, that we don't, can't really say this job is this because every, every community has, you know, maybe the same title, but they do different things. And so it's really hard to say how much that person should receive as far as amount of pay. And I also realized that a lot of our people are at their top wage right now. I have asked, and, and so they're up there, but then we're looking at, oh, wait a minute. Hold it. Forget it. So, yes, this is right. So, we're looking at, you know, if we're going to increase, like, the cost of living of increasing those funds, you know, their, their pay. Well, anyway, when I was looking at this as well, is I'm wondering if this is the real question. Are there qualified people who could do the job of a city employee at the amount that they are getting now? Because government always wants to do all this research and spend money, of the taxpayers' money, and yet, really, when you get down to it, are there qualified people? Because we've gone through a real hard time, and things are starting to move forward. But there are qualified people out there, and with the, the ones who are in position right now, I'm not talking about every single city position. Because I was out at the sewer in the water, and Tom had me go through that, and you really have to be qualified to do that job. But there are some jobs that there are qualified people right now that would love to have any of these jobs that we have now. And I'm not saying not to give a percentage for a raise, but I think we should look at this a little bit more as well. And then why spend money here? I know we approved it last time, but I didn't understand it all. And I just can't see spending that money when we really have to look at our community.
Well, we're looking at the, we're looking at the whole pay system that we have in the city is what we're looking at.
Yeah.
So that we ensure that the people that are in these positions are getting paid what they're worth and where they should be. Because the way our old system is set up, it's antiquated, and that's what the study does. It shows, and when we say pay study, it's more of a, they go in, they evaluate everything, see where we are, put it against other jobs of other folks. That's how they come up with this. It's a lot of research and stuff that goes into it. And we usually do it about every eight to 10 years, I would say, and it's been a long time since it's been done here in the city. And I, and I think that's why, the reason we're going to that and we're getting away from that job match system that the state had, which is, is from the 1980s, which doesn't work anymore.
No, that's right.
And another reason too was both of our unions have the option to open negotiations again on salary, and this would help us maybe in our basis of, well, gee, do we give them this or not? And that's, that, that was also a factor in that.
I just want to look at this, you know, as, okay, let's just look at it and see what we need to do.
And that's what we're doing. And that's why we're, that's why we're doing this.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yep, I know.
And I wanted to say, Lanell has really helped me a lot.
Okay.
So.
May I ask something? I was just going to point out that what's being proposed here is not really to decide any raises or not raises or anything like that. What this study is going to do is take a look at each job description, the duties that each employee does, and then assign points under the new system that they're, they'll be using rather than the job match program that is used by the state. So it's, it's not going to change any existing rates of pay right now. This is just going to realign where our employees are with each other. Because sometimes our duties change, our jobs change, and maybe our job descriptions aren't, or haven't caught up with those changes. And so this gives us the opportunity to update our job descriptions, reevaluate where each employee is in alignment with each other. So this would really help us in setting forth a new pay grade system that will eventually get to the point that you're talking about is what the pay, rates of pay would be for each individual employee or each classification.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lanell. Any further discussion? If not, the Chair will take a motion to approve accepting the spring step proposal to conduct a classification and compensation study for 13,600 plus up to 1,000 for expenses.
I will second that.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, that moves us on to reports. Mr. Maroni. Tom?
I just want to make you aware of what, what could come down the road. The Third Street Bridge, in order to maintain it as a historical registry, it'd be about 1.4 million to remodel it, of which we would have to pay about $280,000. That's coming down the road, and I know as you guys travel, you think it's, you know, it is getting in worse shape. And at some point, we're going to decide what to do. Do you close that bridge? Do you put 280,000 in it?
When's the last time it was inspected?
It's inspected yearly.
Okay, did we get a, a new one lately?
We, we, yeah, we have, every spring we get a new inspection, and the boards, as you can see, the boards are starting to, the integrity is, is there, but we just want to make sure we keep it in line so we don't end up 35W type of a thing going on.
I mean, what type of, I mean, how, how long before we would have to redo the decking on that to make it viable to last another?
Well, I think there's bolts pulling through now, so I think really you could probably redo the decking anytime.
Okay, and about what?
The boards are slapping around, there's, there's pole bar nails that are starting to come up this way.
What type of cost are we looking for? Is that just for the decking, or is that for?
This is for the whole bridge. There's, there's crack, you know, once you take that decking off, then you're going to have to dress, well, now you're going to have to dress the cracks and things like that that should be addressed, so. I don't feel you want to take the decking off and then just slap new decking over cracked.
Right, I agree with that. I mean, it's, we get to that point to where we're eventually, we're either going to have to shut it down.
You're going to have to be an all or nothing, I think, to do it, so. Just keep it in mind that it will come up another year or so, we'll be talking about this, but that's it.
Is that it?
Mayor, Council, I apologize for, for being out of chambers for so long. I had a bunch of items on there. Were any of those polled that you needed further explanation on? All approved. Great. Well, the, with that, I'll move on to my report then. Unfortunately, we are continuing to see phone scams. I've written about it in From the Beat. I've talked with Ken at the Beacon. He's written a number of articles on the scams. But this last month, we probably had at least four scams really to do calls stating they're the IRS, and you owe them money, and you can conveniently pay by wiring them money or cash cards. Fortunately, none of our, our victims have sent any payment. But I just want to make people aware that those, anytime you get a call that says, "You've got to pay us, and you have to wire us money or send us a reloadable cash card number," probably is not legitimate. The IRS typically doesn't make phone calls. They send you a very nice nasty letter telling you you've got to come in and talk to them in person. The utility companies don't, you know, call you on a holiday and say they're sending somebody over with a truck to shut off your power in 30 minutes. You know, when you get those types of things, be suspicious. Certainly call and report them to us. A lot of these numbers are originating, originating over in Puerto Rico and, you know, that, that region. But the accents are, are from Eastern Bloc countries or Middle Eastern. And what they're doing is they're getting bulk numbers out of, you know, those, those domain phone numbers so that they can call utilizing voice over internet protocol and have it appear to be coming from somewhere in US territory. So, just something to be mindful of. If you get a phone call and it just seems odd, it probably is. Please call and let us know. Four in one month, that tells me that we probably have a significantly larger number. They just didn't call and let us know about it. There's not unfortunately a lot we can do, but we do pass that information on. There is collection points and data analysts for, for all that information. Some of this stuff is just somebody sitting around a coffee shop in, you know, some, some far-off country who bought a list on the internet for a hundred dollars and is, you know, calling 10,000 people trying to, to get somebody to pay them enough to pay for everything. Other ones may possibly be connected to terrorist activity. So we send all this stuff on. They get analyzed by government agencies and stuff that's of interest to them, they act on. Vast majority of them, there's nothing we can do. Although I'm, I'm willing to travel all over Eastern Europe if council still chooses to try to track these people down. Just give me the green light and cash-loaded credit card, and we have to go. That's all I have from here. Thank you.
Lanell? Merle?
Firework, fireworks permit. What the heck is a fireworks permit? Why do we have them?
We effectively have them because the state changed the mechanism for it. It used to be issued by the counties. Now, anything within the city gets issued by the city. The process and stuff, I'm not that familiar with. Diane in City Hall handles the, the permitting. She was out Monday, and I just did not get a chance to follow up with her today to, to seek more details. But if somebody is a licensed fireworks displayer, you know, somebody that can shoot them off, and they make an application, that would be and they make an application, that would be the, the grounds in which we would approve it.
And how would, how would you get a license to shoot fireworks?
That's obtained through the state.
So, we had, I, I believe on two different sides of the river the other night fireworks going off, and they were in the trees.
The, if, if it's the application that I'm thinking of, and I wasn't aware of the, the exact date, I, I know when it'd come in, that would have been on the north side of the river. It would have been back behind Ridge Crest.
Yep.
Down in the low spot down there. So, even though the, the fireworks would have been the, the typical, you know, three to four hundred feet up, because it's sunken, it would have, would have been closer to the tree line.
You know where my trailer sits?
Yep.
And you know where the end of the road is? It was right across from the end of the road.
Okay.
So, that wasn't that far down Ridge Crest.
Well, it would have, I don't think we're, I don't think we're off in the general location that I, I knew that one was coming in. Where exactly they were shooting them off down in there, I don't know. But that was one location that?
Because I could see them through the trees.
Okay.
I mean, they, you know, after I got woke up, and my dog was scared, and the neighbor's dog was scared, and, you know, we're going, our first instinct was gunshots because there was just two or three of them, and they weren't spaced very close together.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you could see the fire in the trees, and I'm sure it was from the, from the fireworks, but they were in the trees. Do they have a firefighter or extinguishers?
They, they, they have to have insurance, a plan for extinguishing anything. Typically, they make arrangements to either have fire equipment on scene or their own supply, you know, if they bring in, we had one that brought in their own tanker truck so that they could extinguish anything that needed to be done. We had other ones that utilized the fire department. In this instance, I don't know which method they used. But they have to have insurance, they have to have a plan for that, they have to have a storage component, you know, how are they going to store it until it's displayed, that type of stuff. All that is listed out in the, the applications. Oh, and they have to have a license.
And, and why do they do this?
I can't answer wise.
Yeah, it was noisy.
In, in my profession, if I could answer wise, I could solve a lot of problems.
And I, and I think, I think it was an echo because it did sound like there was some coming from across the river too, but that might have been just the acoustics over there.
Yep.
But I was pretty upset. And when I called nine one one, the dispatcher said he'd gotten over forty calls, and he didn't really know what was going on except that they had a permit, and what in the world is a permit?
Yeah, I know from looking at our calls for service, we only had four. One of them had multiple on there, but there probably weren't more than half a dozen listed, but that doesn't mean that the dispatcher didn't put them all down.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
I'd like to thank Trevor Sullivan for the time he's served with us, and good luck in his future endeavors.
Yes. I have nothing.
A couple of months ago, Personnel Committee meeting, I informed the committee and Ron that I would be stepping down from the council before the year ended. A little over two weeks ago, I let Robbie and Ron know that tonight would be my last meeting. So, I would say I am resigning this evening effective the end of the council meeting. I've been on the council almost nine years, have, by and large, enjoyed myself. It was a rough start at the beginning of, of my tenure, but it's time for me to move on, and I hope that the council will accept my resignation, and I wish everyone good luck. It's, staff has been great to work with, and, and so have the council members.
Bill, we hate to, we hate to see you go. I know you told me, I've been out searching for another member, haven't gotten anybody to agree to fill your seat yet, but it's still in work. So, if there's anybody else out there that might want to, to fill Bill's seat, they can give me a call or give City Hall a call to let us know that they're interested, and then we will talk to them and, and go forward and explain how it would work filling Bill's seat from now till, not this election, but until the election in two thousand and sixteen is what the term would be, and then that person can make the decision whether they were going to run again or not. But call City Hall to, to do that. You know, we've worked a lot together here on the council over the last seven years, and, you know, like I said, we hate to see you go, but good luck to you, and don't be a stranger.
Do we need a motion?
Do I have a motion to accept Bill's resignation from the council?
Reluctantly.
I will second it.
A motion by Merle, and a second by Rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're done.
I cast yes, and I'm pretty sure I was in support of that.
Any other things? I don't have anything tonight. I know there's a lot been going on, we'll continue to go on, and good luck to the Bombers Football Team this week. They're one and one, so let's pull them all forward and maybe the Gophers. Vikings are starting and the Gophers are starting, so football season's here, so it's all time to have fun, and that means the other thing's coming, winter. But anyway, we'll take a motion to adjourn.